Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Welcome to the Exeter Select Board Meeting Minute for June 12th. During public comment, local business owner Jaime Lopez raised concerns about roof tiles falling from the town offices onto the shared alleyway near his business.
I've noticed a lot of tiles falling more and more, and I feel that's presenting a danger to our community, and I think it's a huge accident waiting to happen.
The board committed to investigating the matter.
This is the first time the board is hearing of this, so we will take immediate action to investigate.
Next, the board briefly discussed two action items, including approving bond documents for FY '23 and an update on the Squam Scott sewer siphon project. Following that, the board discussed a memo sent by Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy on employee succession, retirement, and future planning for the town of Exeter.
Of the goals and initiatives set by the Select Board at our goal-setting session in April was long-term succession planning and just an overall review of the organization as we move forward.
We've had quite a few positions that have been vacant for the first six months of the year in DPW, and so it is our recommendation that we utilize some of that savings and put it towards this evaluation of function for the town.
It is, makes a lot of sense to have some sort of planning process that we have in place so that we're not caught flat-footed, you know, because a lot of, we have retirements coming up and we have, you know, things in, things that we can sort of see and we want to be prepared for.
We've got so many other very important departments, we have very important department heads, and we have valuable employees.
The meeting concluded with a town manager's report, committee reports, and a legislative update by Select Board Member Julie Gilman, representing Exeter in the State House. To watch their statements, visit our Exeter TV YouTube channel. The next Select Board meeting is scheduled for June 26th. See you there. The Sustainability Advisory Committee is inviting you to join in the fight against single-use plastics. Starting next month, the committee invites residents to join them in taking the Plastic-Free July pledge.
Take the pledge, sign up on their website, and it's a great opportunity and a chance to see how you can reduce your reliance on plastic and single-use plastic in particular.
The pledge consists of heading to plasticfreelive.org and signing up to reduce the use of single-use plastics. By putting in your email, residents will get tips and tricks for how they can reduce their use of single-use plastics at home, on the go, at work, or out in our community. Actions can include things such as using reusable bags when grocery shopping, purchasing unwrapped food items, or using reusable cups.
We have a real issue with plastic, as much as it is convenient and as much as a lot of brands say that they recycle or the plastic is recyclable, we are at a situation where a lot of the plastic doesn't get recycled. And Greenpeace recently did a report which showed that less than 9% of all plastic is recycled. We really need to move away from, from, from plastic, and there are so many alternatives available now.
With participation all over the
Okay, as the hour is 7 o'clock, I will call the meeting to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective staff here this evening, those in attendance, and certainly those watching from home, and welcome to the June 27th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to start the meeting tonight by introducing the board to my right Selectman Dan Shartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And my name is Nico Papakosandis, and our Recording Secretary will be taking the minutes via video this evening. So we'll start right in. Before we get into public comment, I just wanted to give an update to the board and folks at home. We had a citizen come before the board in our last meeting for public comment with some concerns about the condition of the roof and possibly some shingles, and we asked Assistant Town Manager Roy to look into it. She immediately contacted Jeff Beck the following day, and Jeff had the contractor up on the roof. I'm happy to say that no tiles have fallen, there were no tiles found on the ground, there's no evidence that the roof is in danger. There is one small section that, in tiny disrepair, that probably could last another 10 years, but we're going to take care of that now. Nonetheless, I'm happy to say that there are no safety concerns, but I do want to once again thank that citizen for coming forward with a potential safety issue, and of course, we would always ask the public to come before the board and public comment on just about anything, that's why we're here, so I want to thank him again. So with that, I will introduce public comment for this evening's meeting, and I'll pause to see if there's any members of the public that would like to... Mr. Hamill, good evening, sir.
Good evening, thank you. Jerry Hamill, 12 Oakland Road. I was listening to the meeting last week, and you had basically, you had the report on the long-term succession and retaining of employees, and I was just, just had a question on that. I think it's a great idea, and I think it needs to be done. But it focused a lot on DPW, and then it kind of parlayed to other departments, and I didn't know if that was going to happen to everybody in the town, or just DPW, or just department heads, because I think that's something that, quite honestly, I think that the whole town could really use, because we're looking at even DPW, I mean, it's been almost two years since a lot of those departments have been lean, and all three waters who are in public work, so I didn't know if that was going to parlay to all of these or just department heads, and if you could clarify that.
It's a great question. So as we discussed last week, this is a goal and initiative of the board that we set in April along with the Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. This is to review the entire organization, not just department heads, not just one department, the entire organization as a whole. So to your point, yes. And obviously, Public Works has suffered the most in terms of openings the last few years, and we're working diligently to fill those positions as well as finding a director. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comment? And I don't, real quick to see if anyone's on Zoom. No. So, we did a dry run last week where we recognized our town clerk, Andrea Andy Kohler, who is the recipient, I want to get this right, for the, she was designated the Master Municipal Clerk from the, I want to make sure I get this right, Andy, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. As we stated last week, this is an incredibly, incredibly prestigious award, and you have worked incredibly hard through your tenure here at Exeter, running the clerk's office, running our elections tirelessly, selflessly, ensuring that everybody can vote, ensuring that everybody can vote with ease, always with a smile on your face, downstairs always with a smile on your face. It's great to watch you and the staff interact when, when we come in through the back door. Congratulations, this is incredibly, incredibly well-deserved and overdue, and we have a plaque to present to you.
Again, it's from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks hereby certifies that that's the Master Municipal Clerk, Andy Kohler, in fulfillment of requirements prescribed by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, dated the 2nd of May 2020. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Please do.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the Select Board for presenting this award to me. This has been eight years in the making. I started this journey in 2015, right after I received my certified municipal clerk designation. It takes 60 points to fulfill the educational portion and 40 points to fulfill the professional portion. You earn two points per educational hour, and you earn two points for serving on a committee or board. I want to thank my staff for holding down the office while I attended conferences, executive and regional board meetings, and committee meetings, all for points towards the Master Municipal Clerk. I couldn't have done without it, without these ladies. Thank you.
Congratulations, Andy. Thank you, thank you for your service. Okay, that's, that was the fun part of the agenda, so now we'll go into our business and, first matter of business this evening is the approval of the minutes from the Select Board meeting.
I appreciate your
Approval of our minutes from the Select Board meeting of June 12th, 2023. I'd first ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions. Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of June 12th, 2023.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any appointments this evening, so we'll jump right into our discussion items. The first of which is the public hearing for the special town meeting bond article. Before I read this and entertain a motion to open the public hearing, I'd like to just update the board and citizens of the town. Last Thursday, Attorney Laura Specter Morgan, interim DPW Director Paul Vlasic, and I ended the court date to go before the judge with the petition for approval to have the special town meeting. The judge listened to our request. We were transparent with the entire process, some of the timing issues that we had, and nonetheless, knew about the project, had read about the project, and felt, just as we, that it is quite important that this election go forward, so he did, he did issue an order authorizing a Town of Exeter Special Town Meeting. So that was that step. Tonight, we're going to open the public hearing, but then before we go any further, I'm going to explain something else. So, the legal notice, notice of public hearing, Town of Exeter 2023 Special Town Meeting Bond Article. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing pursuant to RSA 33:8A on the following project regarding a bonded note as part of the Special Town Meeting warrant article. Number one, the installation of two 12-inch siphons from J.D. Hill to Main Palm Station for dollar amount of $3,500,000. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 27th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Novak Room of the Exeter Town Offices. The public is encouraged to attend, and this was dated on June 20 of 2023. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
And a motion from Selectwoman Belanger, second, Selectwoman Gilman. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The notice of the public hearing because of the holiday and a misunderstanding of a memo from legal counsel, the notice went into the newspaper one day late. So on the advice of counsel, I'm going to recommend that the board move to continue the public hearing until July 10th, which is our regular Select Board meeting, and we will have the public hearing at that time, and we will still be able to have the deliberative session the following evening, July 11th.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the motion that you're seeking right now is a continuation of this public hearing?
I am, in one, in one second, because Assistant Town Manager Roy.
It would be a motion for continuance to, and renotice of the public hearing for July 10th.
And we're doing this because we missed by a day for this public hearing?
Exactly.
But we were also required to open it by today, correct?
Correct.
So we're trying to fulfill both of our obligations.
All of our legal obligations this evening.
So understanding that, I would make that motion.
And I will second it.
And for the record, the motion is to continue the public hearing until July 10th and renotice it by June 30th, 2023. There was a motion by Selectman Shartran, seconded by Selectwoman Belanger. Any discussion? Mr. Shartran, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to take back your motion.
I would be happy to do that.
Close the public hearing first.
Before we continue?
Correct.
And I will withdraw my second.
So the motion and the second have been withdrawn. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
For now, or close it?
For tonight.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Selectwoman Belanger, seconded by Selectman Shartran. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0, comes back to the board now. Mr. Chair, can you make your motion?
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until July 10th.
Continue and renotice.
And to renotice the, this meeting, the continuation of the meeting by June 30th?
Nope.
That's the motion.
No. So we want to continue the public hearing and renotice to July 10th.
No, but the renotice has to be posted by June 30th.
We don't need the, the June 30th, because it's actually 24 hours.
Let me make that another, let me make another attempt at this.
Three times as a
I'd like to make a motion to continue this public hearing.
Continue and renotice.
I'm sorry?
Continue and renotice.
Continue and renotice this public hearing until July 10th, 2023.
And I will second.
Motion by Selectman Shartran, seconded by Selectwoman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. The hearing is continued to July 10th. Thank you. Mr. Sharples, Mike Aitken. Mr. Sharples is here this evening to review the contract for the downtown parking and pedestrian flow analysis that was passed on the warrant this year.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. So I'm here to request, as you said, authorization for the Town Manager to execute a contract to conduct the downtown parking traffic and pedestrian flow analysis. As you stated, it was, there was a warrant article number 21 this past March that I included in your packet that was passed by the voters to conduct such a study, and it allowed up to $50,000 out of the unassigned fund balance to complete the project. Shortly thereafter, the warrant passed, I issued an RFP, and that RFP is included in the packet, and we, I gave quite a bit of time, you know, five, five or six weeks or so to respond, and I got them in late, I think, May 26th was when, when it closed. We received two proposals, both from local firms that have worked with us in the past. One was VHB, and the other was Stan Tech. And I decided to assemble, well, as I always do, we assembled an interview panel that included myself, Selectwoman Nancy Belanger, interim Director Paul Vlasic, Police Chief Pullen, and Kristin Murphy. And I brought Kristin Murphy because she hasn't been through this process before, and I wanted to give her a little bit of exposure and, you know, to come and, you know, so she, she can kind of, you know, go out and do her own RFPs in the future, so.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, you're welcome, thanks. And she was, she was great, because she was interested. I asked her if she definitely wanted to be part of it, so she was on the interview panel. So we decided to interview both firms, we only got two proposals, we did the interviews on June 13th, and while we felt that both were qualified to do the job, Stan Tech really stood out as, as the, as the ideal candidate to do this, to do this study. They have extensive experience. Jason Triber was, is the principal, and usually you see, you might see the principal in the, you know, in the, in the bid to, in the interview, and then that's the last, you know, you see, you know, they do QA behind the scenes, but, and Evan Drew is a transportation engineer, has been there a long time, and they have a lady that does public engagement process, and Jason's done many, many of these, you know, similar studies, parking studies, and has extensive experience, and he, and Evan Drew is a transportation engineer, so he sees the, you know, the traffic side of it and so forth, and has been involved in some of these parking studies as well, and they committed to us that they would be the face, and they would both be at the meetings and so forth, so they'd both be hands-on, because Jason is very excited, and this is kind of what he likes to focus on. So the panel unanimously recommended contracting with Stan Tech. And I, I did attach a draft contract that Stan Tech sent me, I did send it to Primex for their review and comment. I thought I was going to get it by the packet, but as a writing of this memo, I didn't get it, and then I kind of, I wondered, I emailed them where it was, and they sent it to me, and I just got it. It has, and they just reviewed the boil-up plate language, not the scope of services. We do that, the scope of services is fine, it's consistent with their proposal, and so forth. They just use like the indemnification clauses and so forth, and they gave me that review, and they, you know, they recommend, as usual, a couple of strike-throughs to protect the liability of the town, so we'll make sure, I've already sent it to them to incorporate these changes. So the total, as you can see, is $49,901.03. So I put in the, I provided a sample motion, and I just put up to $50,000 in the event we need another $89,000 to get through the finish line, I think we will, but, you know, just to round it up, but we'll only spend, but, you know, what, what we end up spending, and it'll be no more than $50,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sharples? Well, first of all, thank you for including Kristin, and I appreciate the work that you did, the panel interviewing, you were part of that, so.
Yes, I, well, thank you for inviting me, because that was the first experience I had with that, and it was an eye-opening experience, so thank you. It was quite a process.
And I just need, Dave, the
The motion?
No, I have the motion, I need the name of the, do you want to include awarding the contract to?
Oh.
What's the, the name of the?
Stan Tech.
Stan Tech.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm gonna use your motion, but craft it a little bit differently. I would entertain a motion to Hold on one second, that's a I'd entertain a motion to award the contract for the downtown parking traffic and pedestrian flow analysis to Stan Tech for an amount not to exceed $50,000 from the unassigned fund balance, and to further authorize the Town Manager or is designated to execute any and all documents and take any and all actions necessary to complete the project.
So moved. Second.
So motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Should pass this 5-0. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much, and may I just say?
Please.
Nothing else, just, now that, as soon as we get them under contract, they'll, they're going to start, you know, soon, because we don't know what their recommendations will be, but, you know, we want to, while not rush the project, be efficient, get it done over the summer, and then maybe have some recommendations, and if there's a warrant article that needs to be done, we'll be in time, but they, they look for extensive public engagement, they're going to engage the downtown business, they're going to engage the residents, so just more of a PR to say whoever's watching, this is coming and we'll be reaching out, looking for information from the public on this.
Fantastic, great, thank you.
It does bring up one question on the, on the timing, but will they be taking into account the school year?
Yeah, they're going to, they, their schedule right now is, is probably finishing up in October, so they'll
They'll see it.
Yeah, they'll, they'll see the, the whole cycle and take, you know, samples and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Along those lines, the peak of the parking jam in downtown really happens between Thanksgiving and, and Christmas, so if you can just give them a heads up that, and it's not just parking spots, but then the, the traffic kind of heads out of town as people circle, so that, that's really the peak of it in my experience.
Okay.
And they're not going to see that, but, but they should be made aware of it.
Okay, yeah.
The fact that there's not enough parking spots and people are circling sends cars out beyond the, the core of the downtown, waiting to get in.
Yeah, definitely let them know that, and since you're a downtown business owner, they'll be knocking on your door as well, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Selectman Shartran. Thanks again, Dave. Next, we are excited to have back the Communications Advisory Committee. We have the Chair, Martha McKenty, we have the Communications Coordinator, Bob Glowacki, and I believe I see Andy Swanson back there. How are you, Andy?
Fine.
Good. Welcome back and thank you for your thorough report.
You're welcome.
That we read, and the floor is yours.
Great, thank you very much for taking the time to see us. I know you're very, very busy now. It's an unusually busy summer for the Select Board and for the Town Manager's Office as well, and all the town staff.
Well, we appreciate the time and effort. This was a very thorough report, so we appreciate that. Thank you.
I know we've given you 17 pages of fine print, so what we've tried to do, Bob Glowacki and I, is to prepare a slideshow to give you some highlights and also to give you some background about the thought process that our committee put into this. You'll remember that in 2021, we sent you our first report, and this is really an update on the progress that the town, the committee, and probably most importantly, Bob Glowacki, our Communications Coordinator, has made since then. So, let's see. The progress that we've made since the 2021 report has been the appointment of Bob as the Communications Coordinator. He's really been a resource for the town staff. The biggest project we've accomplished is the revamp of the website. You may have noticed that the homepage has been improved so that we rotate through highlighted content, and that leads people into other parts of the website where the content has been approved. We've gotten rid of a lot of the old outdated content, made sure that what's there is accurate and complete and easier to use. Bob has worked with town staff to update the website, put material in that's responsive to what residents want to see, help them with updating the social media that they use, Facebook and other social media platforms that they're working with in their various departments. He has been working on preparing news releases for major projects and new developments. With Exeter TV, he's produced informational videos for key issues surrounding elections, working with Andy and her staff, and various construction projects. One thing that's been really helpful has been the inclusion in some of the RFPs of an obligation on the part of the contractors to engage with the affected residential areas and tell them what's going on, to keep them apprised of the progress in the different projects that are affecting their neighborhoods, and that's been really helpful. One thing that's been One thing that's been particularly helpful recently is the production of the new Exeter TV bi-weekly report, which I hope you've all been seeing. It's been coming out every two weeks.
I'm an avid viewer. I'm an avid viewer. It's good stuff.
It's, it's really been going over very well. And we're hoping to get an increased audience. The ratings should be going up. Bob has also been working on putting together catchy meeting minutes, where you have a really short video recap of meetings for not only the Select Board, but the other various commissions and committees in town, so that people who don't have the time to attend the meetings or to watch the entire recap on video, they can see the highlights of the meetings and catch up and follow up with details if they want to, once, once they've seen the highlights. And he's made some other special purpose videos, too. There's been expanded coverage of various town meetings when needed. And we've also worked on, and are working with the Town Manager's Office on revision of the social media policy and, and some other proposed revisions. So that's what we've been doing since the two thousand twenty-one report. So what's missing? I think the theme that we want to come across with you is that we're not asking for a radical change or a lot more money. Our point here is that we could be doing much more with the resources that we already have in the town and things that we've already paid for. So let's talk about that a little bit. We want to deepen our commitment to communications. We're not saying that you haven't already made a commitment. You clearly have, okay? But we want to make a deeper commitment. We want to make communications a priority, both among town staff, so that the various departments and staff members know what others are doing. And we want town staff and the residents to communicate better, so that residents can see that their tax dollars are being used And that means we want to build a culture of communication. And that means going beyond what at least one media expert we've talked to has called passive minimalism. Of course we support better communications. It's easy to say that, right? It means making a proactive commitment to a culture of communication. One of the things that we did when we started doing research for this report was start snooping around the internet, right? And within five minutes of going online and putting in municipal communications improvement, right, in Google, I came across a webinar that was conducted by the Massachusetts Governmental Association. And the fellow who was the lead person in this recent webinar back in March of this year was a guy named Sean Duggan, who's the Communications Director in Lexington, Massachusetts, a town that's twice our size, but a town that's pretty progressive, well-respected, and really interesting place just outside of Boston. And Bob got on the phone and called him up. And he was really great. We had an hour-long Zoom with him and a woman who works with him on his social media stuff. And he said that this was the single most important thing that he'd started working on a few years ago when he was appointed to his job, that you have to build a culture of communication. And it's not something that you can do overnight. It takes a really long time to realize that communications is not a burden. It's an asset, and it takes a while for people to realize that it's something that makes their job easier. So we know that you've already made a commitment to communications. You've made efforts to modernize the town communications by appointing a communications coordinator, spending the money to update the website, getting staff to cooperate in that process, and taking other steps to engage with the public in new creative ways. So you've already started to make this cultural change. But the town departments and all the town staff, especially people who've been here for a long time, are used to handling communications in their own way. They were used to doing it themselves, right? And they're used to doing their jobs the way they've always done it, especially now that they're shorthanded, right? And they're not always going to be willing to make the time to talk to Bob, or to make a video, or to pick up the phone and say, gee, I'm doing something that the town needs to know about, because they're under pressure to get things done, and they don't have the help that they need. We all know that, right? We just heard about it. So how do we focus on deepening this culture of communication? Adding to their job responsibilities might seem like a hassle. So it has to be kick-started and supported with leadership from the top, and that means you guys, the Select Board, the Town Manager's Office, and the department heads. And communication and collaboration must be expressly made an integral part of each staff member's daily job duties. It needs to be made part of their job description. And that's not so hard. And this came from Chris Sigmont, one of our new committee members, and thank you so much, Nico, for putting him on our committee. He's just been wonderful. He said that every staff member should just ask themselves every day a simple question. Am I doing something today that residents need to know about? Wow, a light bulb went off in my head when he said this, right? He wanted to be here tonight, but he couldn't be. And if that's true, I need to tell my supervisor and/or I need to contact the Communications Coordinator. We were all sitting there twiddling our thumbs, thinking, well, how do we do this? How do we do this? And Chris said, it's simple. Every staff member just needs to say, am I doing something today that residents need to know about? So when Bob and I were on the phone, well, on Zoom, we weren't on the phone. We're on Zoom. We used to be on the phone. You know, I'm old enough to, I think about phone calls, but we Zoom now. We don't phone. We Zoom. Sean Duggan said that over time, people come to see the value of communication. He talked about the fact that when residents find what they need on the website, they stop calling people and asking for information. So people, like in DPW, will get fewer phone calls saying what's going on. They'll find it on the website. They'll get used to looking on Facebook or on the website for the answer to that question. If the staff members update it regularly and constantly put the information there, they'll also get positive feedback and appreciation for the public when they understand the work that town staff are actually doing. He told us a story about a Zoom meeting that the town ran during COVID, where they were reporting on some project. I don't remember what the project was exactly. But they ended up having hundreds of people on this Zoom meeting, presumably because they were stuck at home and couldn't do anything else initially, right? But they all learned about this project and the Zoom meeting, and they realized, wow, the town is really doing something good with this. And the people who are working for the town got positive feedback that they weren't getting before, because nobody knew what they were doing. And, and Sean got positive feedback from the town staff, saying, gee, you're helping me. I should talk to you. I should use your expertise and communicate better. What am I doing today that residents need to know? So I want to get on to the specific recommendations we're making, and stress that we're not making a proposal for major expenditures or reorganization of the way things work here, right? Radical organizational changes. We are asking for a cultural change, which may be radical, actually, but it's not a reorganization with new bosses telling people what to do, right? It's just a series of recommendations on how to better utilize the resources that we already have. We have a lot of smart people, right? We have a lot of people who are talented, who know how to communicate. They just need a little boost. So we want to give you an example of what effective communication can look like. Let's see if this video works.
Last Friday, the sewer siphon project hit another milestone. The twelve-inch reamer drill, which widens the hole, successfully made it from Swayze Parkway to the mill side of the river. This week, construction crews are using an eighteen-inch reamer for one final widening pass before the pipes are pulled through. As of June twenty-second, the eighteen-inch reamer has drilled three hundred twenty-five feet across the river. With the first sewer siphon making good progress, attention is now turning to the special town meeting and election to address the second phase of the project. On Thursday, June twenty-second, the Rockingham Superior Court approved the petition of the town to hold a special meeting and election, allowing the town to seek and potentially approve an additional three-point-five million dollars to complete the project. The funding would come from a loan agreement from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services Clean Water State Revolving Fund with ten percent loan forgiveness. Being a bond article, a three-fifths ballot vote is required for approval. The town will hold a deliberative session on the evening of July eleventh, with voting taking place on August fifteen. If the article is approved, the town would proceed with drilling, reaming, and laying an additional twelve-inch sewer siphon to connect to the JD Hill area to the main pump station adjacent to Swayze Parkway. The process involves drilling a pilot hole under the river, which is then widened with remers before the drill pulls the siphon through. This work would be conducted in the fall and continue into early winter. For more information regarding the sewer project and the upcoming town meeting and election, stay tuned to the latest news section of the town website, exeternh.gov.
How long do you think that was?
I'm sorry, what's the question?
How, how long was that?
Oh, that was about three minutes.
It was actually one minute and forty-one seconds.
There you go.
Pretty cool, huh?
Yeah. I have a comment, if I could.
Yeah, yes, please.
It occurs to me that our issues with communication aren't that we don't know how to do it. It's that we don't necessarily realize when we should do it, which is kind of playing off of your question. For instance, with the siphon project, I actually think once it became a bit of a crisis, we did an excellent job of communicating. We marshaled all of our resources, kind of knew what to do. The Chair definitely knew what to do, creating that initial video with Mr. Dean and...
The idea was the Vice Chair, though.
Oh, okay. There you go. So Molly knew what to do. But it seems like it has to kind of rise to that level before we jump into action. And what we need to realize is that there's a lot going on in this town that the, that the voters and the taxpayers and the citizens want to hear about. And we're not the best judge of what they want to hear about. So we should, and, and you're doing this in that meeting minute, I think. You're covering a variety of topics. I assume you're getting some feedback, and that feedback loop is going to refine your sense of what they want to hear about. So I think the more we do this, the better we'll get at it. But I actually think we sort of, as a group, know how to do this. We just don't know when to do it. So your question is right on the money. Am I doing something today that the citizens of this town want to hear about?
And I think you're exactly right. And we have so many different audiences in town, too. I mean, some people care a lot about this issue. Some people could care less. People who don't live nearby don't care. Some people care about the seal that was in the river. Some, you know, some people don't, don't want to see anything that's online at all, and they're much more interested in having a print newsletter. So I think that we have all these different platforms to use, and that's something that we want to talk about a little bit as we go, go forward on this. But I think you're exactly right. We, we don't have a monopoly on what people need to know. And with this technology, we have all these other platforms to use. We have the website. We've got social media. We've got, we want to do a newsletter. We're, we, we want to put signs in town. We want to use that, what do you call that electronic thing that we use to announce when the sewers are being flushed? We want to use that more effectively. So there are all these other platforms that we have to reach different audiences. I mean, Bob today was out at Riverwoods filming, what was it? Kristin Nuno was out there today. And, and one of, one of the, I mean, you can tell the story.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just that you had mentioned before that a lot of people are watching the report. And now that we've kind of ramped it up, and someone came up to me and was just saying, you know, thank you so much for doing this. And I think on the next slide, I'll just explain a little bit more about what we're doing with that. So in addition to that short video, which is now posted by itself on, I believe, Facebook and YouTube, it was included in the, the twelve-minute weekly report. So at the same time, like every other Friday, that package is content, packet, content is packaged into that longer video. We schedule it for, to post by itself. It's also scheduled for social media post, website update, and it's packaged. So it looks like this in the email newsletter, where we, you know, include some additional photos that weren't in the video, little write-up. And all of these, like, if you click this picture, it goes back to the sewer site. There's a hyperlink down here and a button. And with the newsletter, you can, it gives you really good stats that we just don't really have before. So, you know, we sent it to four hundred twenty-nine people, which isn't, isn't a lot for a town of fifteen thousand, but, you know, a hundred sixty-six people opened the email, which still, it's not a lot of them, but that's, that's a significant number that actually opened it. And some other stats sort of related to the newsletter, one hundred fifty-five people have watched the report, and that sewer segment was the first one. And the retention rate was like forty-eight percent. And then it dropped off a little bit after the sewer video. It pops up at different points because people skip around. But, you know, at least half of that number watched that whole sewer update. And then in the email newsletter, thirty-four people clicked on the sewer webpage to like go and find more information. So it really, what went into creating that was really just some emails back and forth with Melissa and talking with Paul. And it, I, I, from my side, it didn't seem like it took them a lot of time. It's just, you know, making sure that, I happened to be walking by when he, he told me, or he drove by me and said, hey, there, there, the drill is going to pop through soon if you want to film it. So just knowing about what's going on, I can be there. And, you know, it took me more than fifteen minutes to put all this together. But I try and, you know, do all the work so the staff don't really have to take too much time to come up with all this information. But it's getting put out there in lots of different places and doing it in this kind of systematic way. It's really easy to video, social media, website, boom, and it's, it's everywhere within like a week. So pretty, pretty seamless, I would say. I'll turn it back.
But this is, this is pretty new, and so people aren't that aware of it. So the more you tell people that this is out there, I think the more it will be popular, and the higher our ratings will get. But there, right now, with this starting effort, Bob has already got it on different platforms, and he's taking the same content and using it on different platforms. And that's what we, what, that's what we need to do, is to use this same content and put it in different platforms, because people who use it, people use different platforms to get the same information. But what was interesting to me is that, you know, we assume that senior citizens are going to want it in print. And this was an, an older woman at, at Riverwoods who's like online, and she's, she's watching the videos. So you can never prejudge who's going to want what, you know? We, we can't, we can't make assumptions. So we just have to go out there and see what's happening. So let's go ahead a little bit more to our... So, let's go ahead a little bit more to our specific recommendations here. So, we really want to improve the coordinator's access to information, and bring him closer to sources of information that need to be shared. He needs to be in the room, and I know that you're in the process of figuring out what's going to happen with various retirements. Andy, I guess, is serious this time? He's really going to retire? I'll believe it when I see it. I guess I'll see him walking his dog by the mill a little bit more often than I already do, but I still don't believe it. It's going to be a sad day for the town of Exeter when Andy's not here anymore. But, when we were talking to Sean Duggan in Lexington, he said, "You've got to be at the center of things. It doesn't matter what your title is, it doesn't matter, you know, what's happening. You've got to be in the room, you've got to know what's going on." When Bob found out about the breakthrough that was the subject of this video, it was an accident. He happened to be there. It shouldn't have been an accident. Somebody should have told him that that was happening, right? Whatever meetings there are, where things of note happen, he should be there. He should have full and fast access to significant information. And staff should be...should cooperate with the work of the communications people. And that doesn't mean just Bob, it means the people in each department...I'm sorry, I've forgotten the name of the young woman who works in DPW.
Trish Allen.
Trish Allen, who's worked with Bob a lot on different projects, and who I understand is really talented. I mean, she should be part of this project. In fact, all of the different people in different departments who are responsible for the website, responsible for posting on social media, they're a talent pool, and we should invest in them, and we'll get to a little bit more detail on that. But Bob can meet with them regularly, and work with them about what are your ideas about what we can do to communicate better with the residents? How can we work better together to really communicate better as a town, to sell Exeter? Because this is a great town, and we should be selling it better than we do. Centralizing the oversight of town communications, this is important to maintain the reliability, accuracy, and the coherence of information that's made public in the name of the town. We worry a lot about who gets to use the seal of the town of Exeter, who gets to call itself associated with the town of Exeter. And since I've been involved with this committee, we've all talked about the website as the primary source of information about the town. Well, yeah, it's a primary source, but in this day and age, it's not the only source, right? We have all these other platforms that we use for communication. And the communications coordinator is really in the best position to determine whether website content, and importantly, other content, like the content that the police and fire department have been getting from Jason, can be used not only on the website, but on other platforms. We're already acquiring that content, maybe we can use it elsewhere, right? And I'm sure that we don't just want to put it in one narrow silo. It might be useful to put it in newsletters or on Exeter TV. We've already paid for it, it's ours. Let's centralize the oversight. And I'm not saying that there's only one person who can communicate or decide what the content is, I'm saying, let's share it. Let's figure out how we can use it to the maximum. If we've already bought it, let's use it. So, there's a simple no-cost solution. Let's have a workflow requirement, that information that's created internally by town staff or by external coordinators, like the...with the RFPs that have come out for the construction projects. If you've got a contractor who's, say, working on a construction project, and you've got a clause in their contract that says you're going to deal with the local people and keep them apprised of what's going on, make sure Bob knows about that, so he can put that information on the website, too, right? We've already paid for it, why would we only want to put it in one place? Okay. So, we've also made a proposal, and we put some details in an attachment to our report, where we're asking for some money. It's not a whole lot, but we want to...you know, we haven't had townwide accounts for MailChimp for an email capacity that's efficient and useful, and I understand that Bob's been working with the town manager's office to consolidate that. The details are in the attachment here, and Canva, which I think is for visuals, isn't it, Bob? Mostly visual information. Probably the thing...there are two things in here that I think that are near and dear to my heart, which is that training and education to build skills for town staff who are responsible for communications. We've done some research into some certificate programs that are available from UNH that are very reasonably priced. Internal capacity building, I think, is really important, and, you know, I have in my career worked in HR myself, and if you're trying to recruit people, you want to be able to show that you're willing to invest in them. And if you can go out and say, "We actually..."you know, "If you come work for us, we pay for you, or we'll help finance for you to go and get a certificate." It shows that maybe it's better to work for Exeter than it is to work for some other town that isn't going to do that, right? So, you want to invest in your people. And these programs look interesting, they look really good, and they look like they can give our staff skills that will help them build their own skills, and help us get work done that we need to have done. So I would urge you to take a closer look at some of the information. We've put links in that exhibit. And if we invest in our own people rather than spend to hire somebody to do a special project for us outside, that, to me, is a valuable thing to do. But that's just my own bias, maybe. Another thing that came out of this fascinating Zoom conversation we had with the folks from Lexington, was discovering this National Association for Government Communicators. I mean, who knew? I mean, there are trade associations for like everything on the planet, but this one is pretty amazing. It's like, for $160 a year, you get access to this remarkable array of resources, including a monthly webinar, where you can get on a webinar with other people all over the country who are working on municipal communications, and all of the restraints that municipalities have that people say in the private sector don't have. You know, the electioneering-type restrictions, and all of the budgetary restrictions that we face, and things like that. The people in Lexington turned us on to that whole thing. It's a remarkable resource for $160 a year. I mean, wow! That's a really great thing. And if, you know, two people join, you get a discount. I mean, it's a deal. Anyway, so take a closer look at some of the budgetary stuff we're doing. I don't totally grasp what the timing is and the process is for all the budget stuff.
That's okay, we do.
That's why you get the big bucks, right? Thank goodness you do. But we're not asking for a lot, I mean, the number total comes to something, you know, really like $8,000. So, anyway, that's our plea.
It was pretty...it was itemized, and it was pretty thorough in your report here.
Thank you. Okay. The townwide newsletter, this is something that I know that Bob's been working on with you guys already. We put in a whole bunch of samples for you to take a look at. This, I think, Dan will...this will get us into the weeds. I mean, the townwide newsletter is an opportunity for each department to put in whatever, you know, thinks the town should know about, and for townspeople to pick and choose what they're interested in. And whatever people respond to will get a really good sense of what they care about with that. We have some specialized newsletters now, like the one that Bob's been putting out, but this would be something that would be more unified, and reliable, and regular, that people could come to look at, sort of as a substitute for...Nancy and I have talked about this, you know, the death of the regular local newspaper is something that those of us who've been around for a while really bemoan. I mean, and I think a lot of the other towns whose newsletters we looked at, they sort of tried to use their town newsletter as something as a substitute for that. Now, one thing they don't do is include any news that relates to things outside of the town. You don't include commercial information for obvious reasons, so...but there's a lot going on that's purely town-related that you would include. Right now, we're only proposing to have an electronic version, and not have a print version because of the cost, and because Chris Sigmundt's on our committee, and he doesn't like to use paper, as you all know. But if there were a demand further down the line for something in print, we might be able to consider that, but right now, we're not proposing to do anything in print.
When you say "regular," Martha, what's the frequency of this in your mind?
I'm not sure. What were you thinking about?
I was thinking, right now, we're able to pull off like a bi-weekly newsletter, with me pretty much doing it, like, me finding all the information. If I had the departments working with me, I think we could just expand that bi-weekly, and it wouldn't really take too much time. I mean, some might be longer, some might be shorter, we could always do special additions, and...but yeah, something that is consistent. I think that's where building off of this bi-weekly report as like the format, and including all these extra links, is an easy way to do it, and we've gotten into that motion, so we could probably just continue that. We used to do that, it used to be the Exeter Weekly Report, and we didn't email them out at that time. I think that might be a bit too much to do, but at the very least, like, if we had like one of them per month, was like a longer email, if there was a lot of stuff, but I think we can easily continue the bi-weekly thing. We'll occasionally take a break or something if people are on vacation or things like that, but it should be doable.
I think the key is it's got to be reliable, you know? People have to get into the groove of expecting it, right?
So you're not going to have an option where people could actually ask for a printed copy of the newsletter?
Well, not right away. Not right away, but maybe eventually.
Okay. Because that was something we talked about, about there are some people that actually want the print copy, so I was surprised that that was taken off.
I think we didn't take it off the table, we just said that we would postpone it.
Postpone it?
Postpone it.
Okay.
Right, 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 exactly.
I can just say one thing.
Sure, sure, sure.
I mean, we'll also work to get it, like, most of the examples that were in there on the town website, you'll be able to view all of the past editions, so people could print it out at their homes and stuff.
Yeah, not everyone is on that. We're just talking about trying to be inclusive for different ways that people want to get this information, so, you know, they might not want to.
Yeah, and we have detailed information, too, on how much the print kind of option costs as well, because we looked into what RYE does. A lot of towns, or a few towns, do do a print one, but that's, you know, for towns a third of our size, is maybe like $12,000 a year.
Okay, you just answered one of my questions.
It gets really expensive really quick, and I think...
Okay, thank you.
As an example on RYE, I think they do a great job. I'm a resident in RYE, but most of the weeks for me, I took those with my recycling bin, so it's kind of, if there was a way, we could set it up to opt-in and opt-out.
$12,000? How many...$12,000 a year, you said, for RYE? How many...
I think they do a bi-monthly.
Do they send out a year? Do you know, how many residents or...
They mail it to every single resident in town.
Okay.
There's...basically, you send a file to a third-party company, they handle the mailing and printing and folding and all that kind of stuff, so...
Oh, so it's sourced out?
Yeah, there's a lot of vendors that do this sort of thing. So we could always do that down the line, or maybe offer, but the way we're going to expand this newsletter, it won't really be in a print style, so if we did something like that, we'd have to spend additional time, like, repackaging it, because there's a lot of links and stuff that wouldn't really make sense in a print version, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, you just answered one of my questions, or a few of them. Thank you.
It's interesting how much more the print version costs. Wow. Okay, anyway. Okay. Finally, our last recommendation is to adopt a communications plan. When we started this process, I thought that we actually might have a draft communications plan, sort of an updated version of the master plan. It turned out to be a little bit more complicated than that, so what we've done is sort of go through the master plan and give you some updates on that. We've also got several...we've done a lot of research and looked at what other towns have done. And what we'd like to do is sort of come up with a draft by the fall, but we'd really like to get some input from you about your thinking, about what you think the priorities should be for the town, and putting together a longer-term strategic view of the town's communications. And I know when we met in our committee last, when Nancy was sitting in when Molly was away, Nancy raised the question about involving town staff in this discussion, and I think this is the time to get appropriate members of the town staff involved in the communications strategy. If you would like to recommend a way that we could do that, it would be helpful to have appropriate input from key members of town staff in developing a longer-term strategy as we go forward. It may be optimistic, given everything else that's going on this summer, for us to come up with a draft by the fall, but that would sort of be our timetable on that. So...
So there's a...go ahead.
No, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm going to go.
I'll wait till the end.
Oh, I was...okay, okay. So, anyway, the select board's consistently demonstrated a keen interest and law support for the work that we've done, and is clearly intent on improving town communications. And what we've tried to do with this report is provide some of the background work that we need to help the town bring its communications capability in line with today's needs. And we recognize that you're currently facing really major staffing shortages, and that folks are strapped for time, but a commitment to build a culture of communications, we think, will help everybody move forward on many fronts in the long and short term. So, we're asking you to support our recommendations in our report, including with some time priority, the fiscal '24 budget proposals, and we're asking for your help in drafting a communications plan with input from yourselves and town staff as appropriate. And we thank you for your time and support. And I'd also just like to recognize that a lot of the rowing work for this came from people who are no longer on our committee, Lindsay and Nina, who turns expired in April. And we'd also appreciate your help in getting additional members on our committee.
That we're already doing.
Oh, you are?
We're trying.
That's on your agenda, too? Well, thank you, we appreciate it.
Look, I got you, Chris.
Which was wonderful, thank you.
All kidding aside, can you go back to the last slide for a minute, please?
This one?
Yeah. So I just...I had a couple thoughts, and I know the rest of the board probably does as well, but first of all, again, thank you for the time and effort that you and Bob and the committee put into this. I especially appreciate going out to other communities and seeing what they're doing, because it's always nice to be able to compare what other communities are doing, what works, what doesn't work, particularly, you know, like-sized communities, same population, same budget, same demographic, similar demographic, et cetera. So I thank you for doing that. There's a lot to chew on here, and we will do that. There's a lot to chew on here and we will do that. With respect to the budget proposals, the timing is perfect because the town manager and staff will be going through, putting together the draft budget, which is presented to the Select Board and the Budget Recommendations Committee in late September. And then the Budget Recommendations Committee goes through their vetting process through mid to late November. And so that timing is perfect for, he has this information and there's time to come back with questions and so forth and so on. Regarding the seal. When, when, when a communication goes out, whether it be in a letter, an email, social media, the seal's representing the town of Exeter. So you have to be very careful that the content is accurate, correct, and legal. The liability issues would be tremendous if incorrect information with the seal representing the town of Exeter goes out. So that's something we need to keep in mind. There's a reason why I think our policy right now with Facebook pages and social media pages having that seal, there has to be some control within the town office to make sure that the information is accurate before it goes out, because there could be legal ramifications if the information's not accurate. To that end, even with the fire department, the police department, I know Jason writes his stories, but correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, I think you and Chief Pootman have the last word. You review what he writes to make sure it's accurate and approve it. So I think the same would, would have to be held with the communications coordinator, presumably that would be from the town manager's office, just to make sure that the information is, is accurate. So again, we're going to have to sit down with the town manager and assistant town manager and go through all of this. There are some fantastic ideas, but for instance, with department head meetings, sometimes there's, there's discussions or topics that are addressed in department head meetings that aren't ready for primetime. And so we have to make sure that we're publishing information before it's ready to be discussed. So there's got to be, there's got to be a differential there. And those are things that can work out. So those were some of the things that, that stood out for me, but I think that your suggestions are good. The board obviously is, is dedicated to continue working with you. Communication is a big issue. One of the reasons why we did the video that Bob was able to do with Director Velasquez, Mr. Dean and, and me for the Siphon Project was in response to an article in the newspaper that wasn't accurate. And we ended up writing, Mr. Dean and I wrote an op-ed piece and then Selectwoman Cowan came up with the idea to do a corresponding video. And that was tremendous. There was a lot of positive feedback on the video and surprisingly, I got a lot of feedback from folks my age that actually read the op-ed piece, whether it be in the newspaper or online. So I do think that the newsletter is still getting out to, to folks. And then we can build upon that with something in town. But, and lastly, I would be devastated if there wasn't anything on paper, because too much screen time is not good for my eyes. I would be devastated if you didn't do something in print, because too much screen time is not good for my eyes.
Yeah, I mean, but I guess the question is how, how are we going to pay for that?
We're going to have to figure that out. So I'm going to be devastated for a while. Selectwoman Alanger.
I'm going to let you argue with Mr. Sigmundt about that.
We've had coffee before.
Yeah. Anyway, okay. So, thank you. The whole committee, thank you, but in particular, I know Bob has done a lot in the last several months trying to find ways for communication to be better, more accurate. I like where this is going. I think realistically, whether it's this budget or next budget or the one after, we're looking at some money, more than training, which by the way, in the budget, we do train, have a lot of money on our budget items for different departments for training. So that's really, I think in the past year has not ever been an issue. So, but I think we need to explore down the road staffing for this, because it's going to take additional staffing. The more you want to do, the more support staff you're going to need to do this realistically. I do have a question. You, you do most of this right now, but when you're on vacation, some of your staff can step in to continue doing this work, right? You're not the only one that's doing it, or are you?
I would say they can do all the video stuff, in terms of website postings and social media. That's not something that they've been trained on and that's just due to time and things like that. And kind of to get at your staffing thing, I mean, it's something that Andy and I will be definitely be looking for, regardless of what we kind of do with all overall communications. For the TV station to continue producing good content, we, we really need a full-time media technician. So that would definitely help, but that's kind of a, with this, but also a separate issue altogether, so.
It is, but I think it's always a good idea to let people know that we're talking about making or proposing, making changes, that there is going to be a potential cost.
Yeah.
I will only speak for myself, but I completely support doing better communication. When I was on this board, from '14 to '17, we kept talking about ways to communicate better. So we're, we're, but I want to be realistic about the approach and what that cost might be in, in the plans, which of course will come up. Can I just, okay. So one of the things, when I did my report after filling in for the last meeting for Molly, something as simple as using our sign boards is something that Bob and this committee have been talking about, because we were just leaving whoever had reserved the sign boards, they were just saying them until the next reserved one, so they want to utilize our sign boards more for our town announcements too, which I, again, it's a simple thing, but I think it's an important thing.
Yeah, and I think actually, it probably was many months ago, maybe even a year ago, I had talked with Russ about it and he was all for it of just, you know, we can have some kind of default ones that promote either the website, or if we have a newsletter, it would, could promote that with QR codes and stuff. That way, you know, it could even be just underneath the temporary ones that go up. So when a temporary one goes down, or if we relook at how the permitting works for those, maybe for time limits or something, then, you know, we make sure there's some time when we need to get out stuff about, you know, a special town meeting or other things. Because as much as we, this was kind of focusing on all the digital stuff we do, the, the stuff either out in town or print stuff is something we need to consider as well, because some people just aren't on, aren't on Facebook or Instagram, so.
And I just have one more, I promise. One of the things that I brought up in the committee meeting, and I still haven't heard anything on yet for suggestions, is how would we handle the 24/7 things? And I don't need an answer tonight, because you can't work 24/7. So I, I'm just saying, so right now, I know, for example, fire and police, they, if there's an emergency, they put that on the, on the social media. So I just, that's just something to think about, how that's going to work, because I think it's important when the railroad tie, is broken near my house and other places, can't think of the name of what they're called crossings, water main breaks, things like that. I think it's important that we have a game plan for the 24/7 emergency.
Yeah, and to that point, that's kind of where the communication plan will come in, because as much as that's this establishing the culture of communications, it will also have things in there, because there's definitely informal things. Last night was an example of, you know, I, I had just gotten out of surfing and got a text or a call, hey, we're having an emergency meeting and.
Was here for a five-minute meeting, go all the way here.
No problem, and I think, but what we need to do, and I think police and fire probably have this really well for their organizations, because they're, your job is, you know, emergency stuff. And, and I've been in the Seabrook drills, we have protocols in place, but I think the town can work on creating those protocols for things that don't rise to that, that level. You know, even such things as the town office is closed because of a snowstorm, like what actually is the notification protocol for staff or the public? I've been here and the town office was closed and no one told me and I was in the other building, so. Just setting those things up, so people have checklists that can just, okay, go down and this happened, I let these people know and, and they're going to go and do these tasks. So that's where the communication plan would come in.
Yeah, so I want to thank you. It's, this is a great process that's happening. A lot of things will have to be vetted out, we all know that, but I appreciate all the work. Thank you for listening to my suggestion about involving other departments, just to get their feedback and their thoughts and, you know, things like that. But anyway, thank you very much.
Selectwoman Gilman?
No, I really appreciate the report. It's, it's quite substantial in, in your suggestions and, and what you've looked at. I do like the department head meeting aspect, because even though something may not be ready for primetime, at least our communications coordinator will have the heads up that something's coming along and maybe the scheduling is blah, blah, blah. And I would like to, at some point, have a conversation about highlighting, I don't know what word to use, projects or applications that go to our different boards, land use boards. That's a little, gets a little complicated, because it involves private properties and, you know, speculation, et cetera.
Yeah, and that's where with this meeting minutes of series, which if you guys haven't seen it, it's on our YouTube page, it's kind of like really short previews, we try to really just say what happened at the meeting. So we'll, you know, I'm often writing the voiceover, basically reading the agenda of planning board case number this was for this and that, and then we, we grab a few little bits from the meeting and then we let people know if, did it, was it approved, moved to this, and we kind of just, we're not saying it was a great decision to do this, or it was, you know, even with your meetings, we're, we're not putting any spin on anything and.
Stamp of approval.
So it's, it's nothing that the public wouldn't have seen already. It's kind of, we're just condensing the meeting. So if there were ever things that you wanted to, to highlight or something like that for a particular reason, like I know sometimes the town may partner with an applicant on something like workforce housing or something, we could definitely, you know, do videos on that sort of thing, but for the meetings, we're, we kind of have a no-edit policy on the meetings, but the meeting minutes kind of breaks that in terms of we just, we're trying to condense it, but definitely open to, you know, if there's policy suggestions for stuff we should avoid or, or do more of, or so.
I know I had another thing, but it's gone, so.
We can come back to you. Selectwoman Cowan?
I'll, you know, echo my thanks here as well. And I, I guess I, you know, I agree with a lot of the things that have been said already tonight, but I want to put a finer point on what Martha was talking about in terms of prioritizing communications and how that needs to come from the top. You know, I think it's one of those things that it takes longer until it starts saving time, where we're dealing with less calls, we're dealing with less people who are angry if we're kind of baking this into how we operate as a town and as a community. And so, you know, have, including our public affairs person or communications coordinator or whatever in, you know, in these discussions, you know, with, with the management of the town manager's office of like, this is ready, this is not, you know, I think that those, I, I would, you know, trust everybody's judgment here, but I do think that this needs to come as a, as an expectation and something that we build into the culture in terms of these different communities and, and, you know, and silos. So we're not just, you know, okay, this is DPW and they only worry about DPW stuff and this is, you know, the police department and this is the fire department, because I think then you, you sort of run into these problems where there's big things that are happening that we're not talking about and then it can conflict, or, or, you know, maybe we can coordinate and, and think through that. So I want to really, you know, appreciate your emphasis on, you know, that this direction comes from us. And I think we are there, we just maybe need to say it with, with an expectation. This is part of your job. You are to communicate and we will help you and we will coach you, but this is the expectation. So I think that this is something that is driven by the communications committee, advisory committee, it can be baked into the work that we do in terms of what the expectations are. We have somebody who can do all of this stuff. We can be more, you know, it, it, there's no great mystery to what we're doing and, and it is probably more exciting than we sometimes think if we're, you know, in our little office doing our, doing our work on our own. And there are things that we should be talking about that you don't necessarily think through if you're only, you know, if you're only with your screen all day. So I really appreciate this. I think that this is a, a good way to, to frame this and to think about it and to be leaders here, you know, as leaders of the town.
Selectwoman Charkery?
Martha, thanks for being here tonight. Thanks for giving us, you know, being the, the front person for giving this report. Thanks for all the work that you've put in along with your other citizen volunteers. It's kind of the highest calling in this town to do what you're doing and I appreciate it. I really appreciate that Selectwoman Cowan is not going to let go on this and she's going to make it happen. You've, you're showing incredible vision and leadership and I'm very appreciative of that. And then finally, Bob, the tone on this thing, it's right on. You're already there and it's just a matter of creating the culture that Martha and Selectwoman Cowan talked about and, and getting you into more rooms or getting you connected to more staff people. The, the bi-weekly minute is, it's awesome and you're doing great work and I'm looking forward to seeing how much more can be done when the whole organization kind of gets behind you and Andy and your department. So thanks to those volunteers again. Citizens doing this kind of work is absolutely the highest calling in this town. Thank you.
Did you remember your question?
I did not.
Okay.
Chief? Can't believe I'm going to say what I'm about to say, because most of the department heads and managers, we receive 50, 60, 70 emails a day. But I have to say, that minute and 41 second video clip you talked about today on the Siphon Project, was the first time I've seen that. And we do department managers meeting monthly, Paul gives great reports, we have one scheduled for tomorrow, so just to paint, paint the picture, it's been 30 days. But when I see a number that says you got 400 and change email addresses, my, my advice was, have we considered the 120-plus employees that have emails and all of the committees and boards and people to push this information out? I think those of us that deal with the public every day, whether it's fire, police, dispatchers, could really benefit from all of that information. I'm not saying not create it, but to digest it, that a dispatcher who's seen that, because it came up on their email, now has more information to give out. And, and I think we're missing the boat if I don't get it as an email. Now, I can choose with my cup of coffee, do I open it, leave it, trash it? That's my choice, but I'd love to get it. And right now, I can't remember the last email I've received. So maybe just consider getting those out.
Thank you.
Perfect.
And, and that's definitely something we want to work into the plan and I may have subscribed some people to our list manually, but we definitely want to try getting that internally and, and this is where, you know, back to kind of your department head example, maybe some of that stuff isn't for the public, but it's for the staff. And I think we can use these same tools for communicating. We have the whole Intranet website, which I, I know I was already speaking with Christina and HR about kind of revamping that, because if we can get more info to staff, I mean, and that's what, you know, Martha highlighted, is we need to make each other aware of what's going on. One, one of the ideas I had for that was kind of the similar format to the department head meeting, but it'd be myself and all the people who do this in the other departments, you know, having meetings and kind of looking ahead and planning for stuff and trying to avoid conflicts and things like that with dates and such, because, and maybe especially, you know, involving front-of-house staff, as I would say, of like the people who interface with the public should really know everything that's going on in town, because a lot of people still just learn about the town through the town clerk when they're paying their taxes. So, you know, we could even print out sheets of, you know, here's the things going on and do print versions in their offices or just give them talking points if there's stuff the town needs to get across. So definitely need to work on that as well.
Can I just, Bob, weren't you also trying to find a one, a solution to get all of these email, department email addresses that they have into one?
Yeah, and that's what Russ had already said, there's some money in this budget that he found somewhere to get that started, because right now, like several departments use free accounts and then Parks and Rec has a paid account, so we're going to consolidate all of that, save Parks and Rec $500 a year to doing that, and then we'll have like one signup list. This will exclude the emergency. This will exclude the emergency alerts that come from the Rave mobile system, because that's kind of like a thing, a separate thing, and also the library has their own software library aware that does theirs, but we'll have Public Works, Parks and Rec, kind of this whole building covered through me, Exeter TV, and we can even set up, you know, if, let's say this, the Conservation and Sustainability Planner wants to do like a sustainable Exeter newsletter, so we'll have all that, people can check what they want. They were even thinking of doing lists for the trash alerts, because some people, that's all they care about is, is the trash going out. That's still one of the top hits on our website consistently, so if you get the trash picked up, you make 90% of people happy in town, I think, so.
Maybe more.
Yeah, for sure.
So I think, again, thank you. There's a lot of good stuff here that we have to go through. We're committed to obviously continuing our work with you. Part of the initiative that we discussed earlier today with Mr. Hamel and his public comment is we do have somebody that's, that's come in here to look at the organization, we call it long-term succession, but part of that is organizational and how can we be more strategic and more efficient? So I think that what, what this consultant group is doing is going to tie into some of the short and long-term ideas that you have. I come back to, I'm, I'm big on protocol and procedure, and I think we just need to, this is all, these are all things we need to be doing, and we need to improve, and we need to get this information out, we just have to figure out, you know, what is the best procedure, the hierarchy, you know, having, you know, identifying who's going to be the last word before something goes out. Also utilizing staff, you know, we have some very talented staff that could be an asset to Mr. Glawacki, and I think, again, back to the consultant, that's something identifying, I think you're right, we're gonna need staff eventually if we build this thing, but what do we have internally? We have some, we have a lot of talent in the various departments, so, so I think moving forward, but moving forward in a very careful way so that we get this thing done strategically and correct.
Slow and steady. Build it as, and we know where we're gonna go at each step, I think, but I think we're, the, what you started, the progress that you're already making is commendable.
So you come back whenever, you know, you're ready with your next steps, and in the meantime, in the meantime, we continue our communication back and forth with looking at some of this and coming back to you with questions, ideas, suggestions, and it's, it's a, again, as Mr. Charter said, you've taken the lead on this, and we're here to help. So thank you.
If I could just want one thing, because it was the kind of the, the ask that they have, and also me, because I'm gonna be helping them draft it, we included in that really long list of pages that you guys get in all your other long pages, like I took excerpts from the master plan anytime they referenced communication, and I know that master plan was done some time ago, so what, what kind of the ask from you guys as the leaders of Exeter was kind of, are those goals and priorities what's outlined in the master plan still what you want?
Fair question.
Us to focus on as we're drafting this communication plan, because we want to make sure that, there's a lot of good info in there about communication that I didn't really think about, and that establishes the town's voice, because it's like what we focus on, and it had stuff in there about, you know, conservation and community building and highlighting, you know, what we're a great town and all that good stuff, so kind of revisiting that, and then if you guys have new priorities, that stuff has changed, because that can kind of guide what we're talking about.
Of course.
As much as it's like how we're doing it, so.
So the master plan is not created by the board, the select board, it's created by the citizens of the town, again, the highest calling. And so it really can't be revised until we initiate that master plan process again, and I know you know that. So yes, that is the document that ultimately should drive all town decision-making at a kind of really fundamental root level, and there's great stuff in there about communication that was created with the input of, of citizens of the town.
The communit, is this still on? The communications plan is, is probably a little less lofty, shall I say? It has a little bit more of a pragmatic part to it as well. For example, we want to be able to focus, and this is where the staff part comes in that Nancy was talking about, we want to be able to say who's responsible for routine communications, and this goes to what you were talking about, who has to approve things before they go out, who's responsible for emergency communications, and, and that would be sort of a hierarchy of approval, the 24/7 type of thing you were talking about.
Just to be clear, he asked a question about whether the master plan was still applicable.
Yes.
And I'm saying yes. Obviously, there's much more sort of grounded details that aren't addressed by the master plan.
Right, but, but I don't want the idea of the master plan and that process to hold up the development of a communications plan.
I'm clear on that.
Because even though the communications plan is also strategic in nature, it has that practical aspect to it, which is probably more important on a day-to-day basis and addresses the issues that Nico and Nancy are talking about, which are practical ones.
Yeah, no, I'm clear on what you're saying.
Yeah, okay, great.
Anything else for the communications committee?
I was just gonna say that Russ and I have met with Bob and, and Andy a few times, and similar to, and I think Martha said, there is a review as part of the reclassification as to the, the positions and the titles and whether or not that's appropriate, so you may see some recommendations as part of that process.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Mr. Velasic, I think you're up. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Okay, just, Bob, I think you got the rest of the agenda.
Yeah, a couple items. Paul Velasic, interim Public Works Director. Bob set the stage pretty good, because right now I'm supposed to give a, an update on the Squambska Siphons, and we just watched a video that took us to June 19th, so what's happened in a week and a half is they are reaming with the 18-inch reamer, it is going well. The progress right now is slow because they're in the hard part of the ledge, and they're about halfway through with this ream. What we have coming up, and then after this gets through, is pulling the pipe through. And originally, that was going to be pulled from the Swayze Parkway side. I have heard the consultant, not the consultant, the contractor and his sub talking about how they might want to do things a little bit differently, but right now it's only a little bit of chatter. We'll find out more as we get closer to that sequence.
Terrific.
And that's it for the siphon report.
In under a minute forty, I think. Any questions? Okay.
I'm glad it's going much better than it was.
Yes, absolutely. So next we have the Public Works Facility Master Plan Feasibility Study Recommendation.
Okay, I sent out a memo to Russ Dean recommending award of the contract to Weston and Sampson. Article 20 of the, this past town warrant vote was for several things to do with the, with the Public Works facility. First of all, within the amount of $50,000, and it was to, the purpose of it was to lay out potential new facility on the parcels at 13 New Fields Road, to master plan a site circulation and fuel island location, and to review current and future staffing and operational needs, and to provide a concept level development budget. With that, we have Weston and Sampson that has many areas of expertise, some of them are architects and stuff, they were the architects for the Rochester Public Works facility, and we have them on our qualified engineer list.
Excuse me.
And it was appropriate for us to go ahead and seek a proposal from them. We actually had most of this last year too, but we did not get awarded the town vote for, for the funding of that, so they're, they're back this year with this contract to do that work.
Any questions or comments for Paul? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to award the Public Works Facility Master Plan Feasibility Study as passed by Article 20 of the 2023 Town Warrant to Weston and Sampson in the amount of $45,800, and to further authorize the town manager or his designate to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Next is the High Street Cross Country Sewer Capacity Rehabilitation Design Service Contract.
Yes, let's start with the past year's town warrant, once again, Article 14 for $380,000, was for the design of approximately 5,100 feet of sewer capacity upgrades that starts from about High Street at Great Bridge, goes up to where Gilman Lane used to come out at the, the PEA facility there, and then drops down off of High Street and runs parallel cross-country out to a drink water road. That's the location of it. The consultants that did the analysis originally to find the capacity issues for us was Underwood Engineers. They, they were the ones that put this proposal together for $286,800, and in the meantime, knowing how the SRF funding goes, they have already put in a pre-application for the anticipated construction cost to, for next year.
Terrific. Any questions?
No.
And I would entertain a motion to award the design contract for High Street and Cross Country Sewer Capacity Rehabilitation as passed by Article 14 of the 2023 Town Warrant to Underwood Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $286,800, and further authorize the town manager or his designate to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And last, the Roundabout on Front Street, Pine Street, Linden Street intersection.
A couple of years ago, there was an intersection study, it was the Phase 1 portion, two intersections out of four were recommended for a town warrant vote last year. Those were the intersections of Front, Pine, and Linden intersection, the recommended improvement there was a roundabout, and then the second intersection was the Winter Street, Columbus Railroad Avenue intersection, that is a relatively minor improvements with curb and sightlines. So Article 5 was approved in the amount of $798,000. I'm in front of you tonight for Design Services to VHB, the authors of that intersection study, the previous intersection study, in the amount of $104,800.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to award the Design Services Contract for the Roundabout at Front Street, Pine Street, Linden Street intersection as passed by Article 5 of the 2023 Town Warrant to VHB in the amount of $104,800, and to further authorize the town manager or his designate to sign the contract.
So moved. Well, second, but I do have a one question.
Discussion, go ahead.
On page two of this, on the under survey base plan preparation, the last paragraph references Epping Road.
Oh, you caught that. That was our one mistake in there too, and, and I caught that after I'd already sent, or at the timeline when it was getting there, and I called up the, the engineer and says, is it all right if I cross that out? Or, and he goes, well, I don't know, he has to take it to his supervisor, so we'll go ahead and do it, we know what we mean, but it should not say Epping Road, and it was a repeat from a previous contract, so my apologies for that, and good eyes for catching that.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I need to withdraw my motion, because we have to amend that.
And I'll withdraw it.
Yes.
So can we say to go forward as?
With the amendment, with the amendment as discussed.
Okay, I will move that.
Do you want me to read the motion again?
Yeah.
For, just find my, right. One moment, please. Here we go. I would entertain a motion to award the Design Services Contract for the Roundabout at Front Street, Pine Street, Linden Street intersection as amended per discussion at Select Board Meeting of June 27, 2023, as passed by Article 5 of the 2023 Town Warrant to VHB in the amount of $104,800, and to further authorize the town manager, manager or his designate to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Can you pause one moment? Would the board indulge me? We do have one more discussion item, could we jump to permits and approvals? Because we have one approval for Mr. Velasic while he's here, and we can let him go home.
Okay.
This was a, this was an addition to the packet.
It was a supplement posted today.
Yeah, the West Side, I've got it, yes.
The other, the other document here for permits and approvals, it does not require any action from the board other than our signatures, so that's the dog licenses.
Okay.
Paul, do you want to just speak to the West Side Drive Project real quick?
Sure. The West Side Drive Project was approved at the last town warrant, Article 4, for construction. The dollar figure for that was $6,020,000, and that was to, for construction of water, sewer, drainage, and roadway improvements. The Clean Water SRF Loan was approved by a pre-application, and we need to put that application in this week, and the Clean Water side deals with sewer and drainage improvements, and the amount of this SRF loan is $3.7 million with 20% forgiveness. And there is a suggested resolution to approve a loan agreement and authorize the, the town manager, assistant town manager, or the select board chairperson to effectuate the contracts.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Velasic?
No.
Then I would entertain a motion to enter into an approval loan agreement with the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $3,700,000 to the town of Exeter to authorize the town manager, the assistant town manager, or the select board chair to sign the paperwork associated with such agreement on behalf of the town for the West Side Drive Area Utility Improvement Project as passed on warrant Article 4 of the 2023 warrant.
So moved. Second.
Any motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Have a good night. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to skip over and allow Paul to go home. The last discussion item, we ran into the situation recently where the town manager's signature was required, and neither the assistant town manager nor myself were authorized to sign the documents. So we spoke with Attorney Morgan Specter, who recommended that the Select Board formally vote to give the assistant town manager the authority to sign for the town manager vote to give the assistant town manager the authority to sign for the town manager in their absence, and also suggested that the Select Board Chair be given the authority to sign in the absence of either the town manager or assistant town manager. And if we take that up as a vote from the Board, then it becomes a matter of record and the authority is given to all three. Moving forward, whomever those three will be, are there any questions or discussions?
I'm all for this.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to authorize the assistant town manager and/or the Town of Exeter Select Board Chair to have signature authority on all contracts and documents when the town manager is absent. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Post. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Melissa. We do not have any tax abatements.
Yes, we have one.
Oh, I'm sorry. One.
My job.
You've been waiting. Patiently, I might have.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve a tax abatement for MAP 111 Lot 5, Unit 7, in the amount of $230.20 for the tax year 2022.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes five zero. Again, we just need to sign this warrant for unlicensed dogs before we depart this evening. And Town Manager's Report. Melissa.
Do we have to do this?
Oh, jeez, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
This was also a supplement. This is an application to permit the display of fireworks on?
July 15.
July 15. At 9:00 PM, rain date July 16. Melissa, do you want to speak to this or?
Sure. So this is the application for the permit that goes into the Fire Marshal. This is the same company we've used for two years, I believe. And essentially, the fire chief has already signed off on the application, and it is requiring, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, the, thank you, the signature for, oh, there we go, the governing board. So you would just be voting to authorize that you can, you guys will sign this. That was not very eloquent, but you know what I'm saying.
We got what you're saying.
So the Select Board signs the application?
It's, right, the application for the permit to have the fireworks.
So you need a motion authorizing the Select Board to sign the application for the permit for the fireworks. Okay. And I would entertain a motion to authorize the Town of Exeter Select Board to sign the application for permit for the fireworks display on July 15, 2023, or the alternate rain date July 16, 2023. Do we need to put the vendor?
American Thunder Fireworks?
Yep. American.
Inc.
Yep.
Yeah, that's who submitted the application.
Okay.
Yep.
So the fireworks display presented by American Thunder Fireworks Incorporated?
Inc.
Inc.
Sorry.
Incorporated.
So moved.
Isn't that?
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is there a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Move on.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes five zero. Okay. Melissa, now.
Now you're ready.
Please.
All right. So I was able to attend the Municipal Managers Association of New Hampshire Conference last week, which is the one that I got the scholarship to attend, and I have to tell you, it was fantastic. The sessions were really informative, but also the networking with other local municipal managers was really fantastic. So I felt like I built some contacts and stuff that Russ and I can, you know, Russ already has all of these contacts, so it's great to do this. So it was a great, great conference. This week, we've been working with Bill Keegan, who has started our, as the consultant to look at our succession planning, look at our organization, as you spoke about earlier. He held a kickoff meeting this Monday with all of the department heads and the deputies to explain the process and what to expect, and then took a lot of time meeting one-on-one with department heads, sometimes up to two hours. He is going to return on July 24th and 25th to continue that process and meet with Russ. And you already spoke about the inn by the van stand, so that's it.
Terrific. Thank you for representing the Town of Exeter at that conference.
It was fantastic. Thank you.
And I had the opportunity to sit in on that department head meeting, and I thought it went very well. There was a lot of, a lot of back and forth. The department heads were very engaged, seemed to be excited to collaborate. I think that they were satisfied with Mr. Keegan's credentials. I know when he returns, he'd like to meet individually with the board members as well. I've asked him to give ample notice because we all have day jobs and other commitments, so he was going to do that. But it was impressive to see the homework he'd done to learn not only the RSA 37, the Town Manager's Office, but also the SB2 government, and made the observation that he was impressed with the RSA because in Massachusetts, they're, it's really up to the town charter, and there's no real guidance for town managers, and it can be a little rogue sometimes. So he actually thought 37 was a good thing for the most part.
That's an interesting observation.
But I also would be remiss, I was particularly impressed in the hour conversation that I sat in with Mr. Keegan and you on your knowledge of the RSAs and SB2. And it was quite a, it was very nice to sit back for an hour and listen to the two of you.
Let the prose go out.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, thank you. Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Belandra.
So I, as you know, on the 13th of June, attended the two interviews for the Request for Proposals. And then that evening, unfortunately, I got sick and missed the Conservation Commission meeting. However, Kristin Murphy was very nice and sent me a brief summary. Eversource is doing some more work on the lines. There was a recommended, 14 Hobart Street was in front of them for conditions on condo docks to include information on fertilizer use restrictions and the shoreline district maintenance requirements. So that was recommended, and I think I missed one of the most important things is that they voted for their chair, vice chair, and the status. So same as last year, Andrew Coffe is again the chair, Trevor Matea is again the vice chair, and David Short is again the treasurer. They also, the Conservation Commission also authorized the chair, Drew Coffe, to submit a letter of comment to the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services on a proposed wetlands rule change that would eliminate the requirement for applicants to explore local mitigation options. First, for wetland impacts before paying into the in lieu of fee program. There was concern by the commission about that change, and they really just don't think that's a good idea and want to keep it status quo. So the chair was authorized to send a letter in opposition of that move. Their next meeting is July 11, which of course I have to tell them I can't attend because I'll be at deliberative session. On June 15, I attended a workforce housing coalition presentation in that morning at Flag Hill Staff Distillery and Winery in Lee, and Darren Wyndham, our Economic Development Director, was also present for that. I had to leave early because I had a meeting at work, but I believe Darren stayed. June 15, that, oh, that's not the right date. Anyway, I attended Planning Board Sightwalk at the Exeter Country Club. That was from 8:00 and ran till about 11:00. Again, I had to get to the office, so I left about 9:15. And then the next evening, the 16th, they were the only people on the agenda, and about 3:15 decided that they weren't ready to do that meeting. So that has been continued to, or tabled, I should say, to July 13. So we had a three-minute meeting that night where we tabled it. And then on June 22, I attended a 79E webinar, and one of the presenters was our own Economic Development Director, Darren Wyndham. And that is.
Getting around town.
It for my report.
Thank you.
Short and sweet.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only town meetings I have were the HDC met and considered a change of a previous approval to 47 Water Street, which is the building next to the Ioka on the rear. They changed the front entrance, which really had very minimal change from what we had already approved. And, but on the back, they, what they found when they were going through their construction and their plans for turning the upper floors residential is that they needed more light because, you know, there's a building on each side of it. So the back elevation we discussed and found appropriate treatment was being done. It's going to be amazing how much glass you're going to see there, and yet somebody can furnish it. That was one of the questions, where's the furniture go? The Heritage Commission Demolition Subcommittee met today, a house on Front Street that wants to demolish their barn and a little side entrance piece. But unfortunately, the, and this happens very often, either the owner or their contractor don't show up. So we can only look at the outside of a building, and we can't qualify, you know, if there's a historic value to the resource by construction, or, you know, was there something really important associated with that? So we have to reach out to them to say we want to go again. And then I just wanted to do a little lesson on the state level of what's happening on the 29th. It's the last day of the House Session. And what we're doing right now, we're in the period called where committees of conference are formed. So I'm trying to make this as simple, but I'm going to use two bills that were in my committee of municipal and county government. We had HB 75 that just dealt with the dollar limit before a county has to send a project out to competitive bidding. And then we had HB 270, which was about districting Stratford County's commission, Stratford County, county districts, because they have none. It's just one county without any districts. And there's a reason why the sponsor wants to do it. There's reasons why it's problematic. But what happened is that when those bills went, crossed over to the Senate, the Senate stripped HB 75 of the county competitive bidding language and inserted the language from 270, which our committee had voted to retain and study on further. So now that Stratford County districting bill is going forward. When it came to the floor, it has to come back to the floor as the House bill was amended by the Senate, and the House has to concur with the amendment or non-concur. And that vote, both of those failed. We wouldn't concur with their amendment, and we wouldn't non-concur with their amendment. So then it became a non-concur with a committee of conference. And that committee of conference is made up of a representative group from the House of Representatives and representative, from the other body on the Senate. They're also proportionate to the size of the bodies, and they're proportionate to the makeup of the party, partisanship. But what can happen on these committees of conference is, as it's going through, they only have a week to do this process, to see if they can come to some kind of agreement on the amendment, or can they explain it further, make it acceptable. But what can happen is the speaker can just say, I don't want you on that committee anymore and replace people. And in this particular case, one party got unrepresented, and one party took over the whole thing. And basically, they, you know, exceed it is to the Senate's amendment. And I just find that to be a really problematic part of our process, and we'll have to figure out how to change that, but I think it's, it might be a constitutional thing. Well, anyway, so I just wanted to talk about that's where we are, and so we're listening to reports that may or may not be, in my opinion, as representative as I would like them to be. So that's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Selectwoman Collins.
I didn't have any.
Selectwoman Charter.
I have no report this evening.
I have two. Swayze Park Trustees met, and their meeting was actually a sightwalk, and they identified places that they need to trim and mow and prune and all of that. They were provided an update on the Squam Scott siphon. And the River Advisory Committee also met, the second part of that. Again, Director Velasic gave a update on the siphon project. I actually spoke up and advertised the process of the town meeting, giving the key dates for the deliberative session, and the election. And the River Advisory Committee is very much in support of the warrant article and really wants to do whatever they can to help pass this article in August. So really behind that. Kristin Murphy gave a presentation about healthy lawns, and this is a town initiative. There was a, and these are on the website, and they're also included in the minutes, but there's a little pamphlet on how to keep your lawn healthy. And there's a, because I'm going to text Abby, what are these called again?
QR codes.
So there's a QR code. And you can pledge, you at home can pledge, a healthier lawn by planting natives, mowing higher, let your clippings lie, because it's actually very good for your lawn, test the soil and water wisely. And if you do these five things and commit to pledge, then you can get a sign that will be delivered to your house, then you have a healthy lawn.
That's so cool. I love it.
I planted that.
That is cool.
So again, these are on the website, and I know she's aggressively marketing this initiative, so.
Yes, I need to get it to my sister, who still argues with me that leaving stuff is not good.
So I wanted to bring that up.
One of the other things that happened, I think, at the Elway Festival was handing out pollinator packets, seed packets. And one of the things that you can do to keep your lawn looking really nice and to make it healthy is to toss clover seeds around your yard. I did that last year.
Nice.
It brings up the flowers, the bees pollinate, and flowers smell nice, and when you mow, your lawn is green.
Yeah, nice. Very nice. Okay, correspondence. We had a letter from Comcast with a increase for Starz Channel, excuse me. We had a letter from Catholic Charities of New Hampshire and its New Generation Program extending their thanks for the support received from the Town of Exeter this year. And we had the NHMA Legislative Bulletin. Board Calendar, we meet again on July 10. Deliberative session the next evening at 7:00 at the Town Hall. That's July 11 at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall. And then we meet again on July 24. And before we adjourn, I just want to make the comment and the observation that as hectic as the last couple of weeks have been with arranging times and making sure everything is done, this was a really productive meeting this evening. We worked on moving forward with our communications, and we also approved moving forward on five warrant articles that passed this year. So it's just really refreshing to be able to do the work of the citizens, and I want to thank the Board tonight. It went a little long, but we got a lot done.
I love it.
Me, too.
I like getting stuff done.
So if there are no other comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passes. We are adjourned. Good evening, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you.
You just signed the dog license.
Yes.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.